First tonight, we will have our invocation of our pledge here in my state.
All. Your prayers.
Our Father and Son, we thank you for another day you've given us and for another year, Lord. And we will, because everyone present here tonight, has some decisions to make, Lord, that affect all of us in the future and now. And, Lord, I pray we'll all make the right decisions, Lord, and keep us all safe and out harm's way and be with us as we leave this place. Go with us and keep us all safe. In your name we pray, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Gail?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike Paul, Mike Gail. Okay, first on the agenda, the vice council, as advertised in the LPC, the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, Sally. Let's start with the roll call. She's sliding on in.
Dan Lipton, District 1.
Paul Ho-Saple, District 2.
Jacob Missing, City Attorney.
Justin Greenbrier.
Sally Haddable, Clerk Treacher.
Steve Crane, District 3.
Gail Linder, District 4.
Dylan Moore, at large.
Pardon me, council calls president of the county force to go up the form. We proceed. Now, pardon me, as advertised with LPC, we have a 6:30 public hearing for additional appropriation, ordinance 2023-1. Council, if you turn to page 1 and 2, you will see the two items for additional appropriation. Neither are new money. Sally, would you like to talk about it just briefly?
Again, the local road and bridge matching grant is like we had last month. It's a continuation of the Community Crossings grant from 2022 to 2023 that we need to have appropriated for 2023 to be able to pay it out. For the ARP, that is the money, the second half of the money that we received, and it needs to be appropriated for this year.
Okay. Anybody in the audience to speak on ordinance 2023-1? One, two, three. Hearing not. Council, seek motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I second it.
Dylan made the motion. Paul seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay, council, you will see exactly what page 1 says. Sally indicates no new money, but for the calendar year, we need to appropriate that, so we seek motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the additional appropriation, ordinance 2023-1.
I'll second.
Steve makes the motion. Gail seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay. Again, public hearing advertised with LPC at 6:30 for 103 West Homer Street. You will find that on page 3. Council had made comment and request in the last meeting to have this on the January docket in the attempts to address the ownership and hopefully have someone respond. So with that, is there anybody in the audience with ownership or information on 103 West Homer? Once, five, three. Okay, council, seek motion to close public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I second it.
Dylan makes the motion. Paul seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay, council, that's where we're at. You did make a direction with our former attorney, and he had done just that. We'd set this up, trying to get further information. So at this point, going forward, Jacob, Mark, let you two give a comment on how you'd like the council to address this.
At this point, I propose that we're going to move forward with the necessary public proceedings in order to take title of the property in order to be able to raise the unsafe building to remediate the issue. That's what we're proposing here this evening.
Would you want some conditions to that, Jacob? Do we want to define a 30-day assessment? Do we need the building commissioner to take that lead to secure the building by chance? Do anything we can for a first step?
I think our first step is going to be for the building commissioner to basically take immediate control of the building to ensure that there's no ongoing safety issue posed to the public. We would like to proceed within the next 30 days to where we're initiating the action to move forward with the ultimate goal, I guess, of raising the building to fully remediate the issue.
Counsel?
How long will this take? I mean, this whole situation?
Well, I mean, it'll be a judicial proceeding. So, because with anything with the court, there's no certainty, but by following the statutory notice procedures with that, there's going to be, in this circumstance where, as tonight demonstrates, there's a difficulty in tracking down the actual owner.
Yeah, we'll track that for a long time.
Yeah, well, so the courts provide a mechanism for effectuating service and process on a party that you're not able to, say, give them the certified mailing of a summons for a court proceeding. You do a notice by publication. It has to run so many times, and then you're able to have the court deem that service was properly effectuated. And then when you move forward from there, if they fail to appear, then ultimately a default judgment would be rendered against them, and then you're going to move forward getting the relief that you're seeking to be granted.
Well, could we go ahead and move forward with the court?
Yeah, we can move forward with the court, and that's what we're proposing to do this evening. We do need to take the initial steps to secure the site and get, obviously, get the notice together. It'll take a little bit of time to move forward with that. So that's what the proposal is this evening. But at this point, I don't suspect that it'll be an extremely lengthy process with the courts, given that there's been difficulty in tracking the party down. But there is a procedure through which notice has to be posted for periods of time, published, and allow that person to respond to the lawsuit. If they do, then the process could drag out a little bit longer. So there's always that possibility, but it should be a fairly expeditious process.
Okay, well, let's just move on forward with what we need to do.
Can that be your motion?
Yes.
Please, I want to paraphrase for you. Gail makes the motion to proceed under attorney's recommendation to have the building commissioner make necessary provisions within those next 30 days with the attorney's opinion moving forward. So your second?
I'll second that.
Dylan seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay. Thank you. Okay, council, if you'll start then with your agenda. First item after the hearings, minutes of the meeting, December 12th, page 4 and 5.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 12th, 2022.
I'll second.
Dan makes the motion. Steve seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Minutes of the organizational meeting, December 12th, page 6.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the organizational meeting on December 4th.
I'll second.
Dylan makes the motion. Gail seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Minutes of the call meeting, December 27th. There is one error on page 8. If you'll notice the minutes, it reflects councilman Lipton making two of the motions. Sally will review the tape and correct who made the second other than that. Council, you could approve with that correction.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 27th, 2022, with the correction to second the motion.
I'll second.
Dan makes the motion. Dylan seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Reports for our departments, please. Council, page 9 through 14, with your financial statement. Sally, anything you'd like to add tonight?
Nothing.
Okay. And you'll seek motion to approve at your convenience.
Justin, we have received both of those opioid settlements at this time?
Yes.
For first draw?
Yes, first.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial statement for December.
Dylan makes the motion.
I'll say.
Prove. Gail seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Attached, page 15, is your senior citizen report. And then we have both the activities and the calendar. Okay, project updates. Council, I do have included, Sally asked if she didn't put this in on two pages, 17 and 18. You have seen, I'm sure, with the help of LPC, the press release regarding some of our upcoming projects, and they were defined really well, but I wanted you to see them in writing after the fact in case you didn't see the newspaper article, certainly.
Yeah, that was a nice article.
Thank you, Danny.
I like it new sidewalk.
Hey.
Well, you know it.
That's right. So more to come, but thank you, and just wanted you to have a copy of that. Unfinished business. Council, and if you know, 306 East Salem Avenue has been on your agenda for a few months, and we do, oh, there's one, I see. Oh, it's the same. Okay. So we do have a judgment. Pardon me, we do have an order from the court. The judge did make an order. The property owner has 30 days to January 18th, but so from that, it is pretty well defined then. If there's no compliance, certainly we have a prerogative to take further action with us cleaning it or within a third party, and within that, we can recoup the costs. So Judge Madigan got the order there for us. So that is pending, obviously, until January 18th. We'll pass that on the bench. They're definitely looking at it. Anything you want to add to that, Jacob?
Yes, my recommendation would be, for any further discussion on the overall strategy litigation going forward, I recommend convening an executive session. Obviously, take any action officially, you're going to have to, I mean, to a regular or specially called meeting, but for any of the strategy discussions, I do recommend having an executive session.
I'd make a motion to approve the attorney's recommendation.
We'll put that on the December, February docket. That's Dylan's motion.
I'll second.
I don't think Dan would just second, so we will get that on. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side. Thank you for all the work on that, Mr. Bauer as well. Okay. Sally, we're ready for new business. Council, before you, two items tonight. You have a ordinance 2023-2, cross connection, amending ordinance 2019-10. That has been on the board of works agenda tonight as well. It comes to you as an authority, 2019-10. Council, page 19 through 44, is basically a supplement to give more teeth and more action items to the 2019-10. We had a nice ordinance that didn't quite spell out exactly the industrial users' application to their part of having compliance and to the part of having violations. So I'll, again, for Jacob, please.
Yes, so the 2019 ordinance, which is ordinance 2019-10, it's set for a fairly high-level and in general, policy program for the cross contamination or cross connection program. It basically conferred upon the board of works the duty to maintain and apply and implement the program. With the Salem Department of Water has done is have this policy prepared, that's a little bit lengthier, more detailed policy to use moving forward for the cross connections. Essentially, what's been delegated thus far to the board of works is sufficient for them to go forward and put a more specific plan of action into place that's consistent with the policy that was previously approved by this council. That said, our recommendation of the board, what the board of public works did earlier tonight, is pass a resolution asking this council to amend the earlier ordinance to formally incorporate by reference the more detailed policy and to reaffirm the duty and the delegation of authority to the board of works to implement that program going forward. So that's what, before you tonight, is an ordinance that is, again, incorporating by reference this more detailed policy for backflow prevention, and that will reaffirm that the board of works will be implementing that going forward. A couple of items of note as well is in the policy itself that's attached to the ordinance on, it's pages 3 and 6 of that document, which is pages 26 and 29 of the packet. There appears to be an error, a scrubber's error, that refers to Brownsburg rather than Salem in two places, one place on each page. What I recommend tonight is if you do choose to adopt this ordinance, amending the earlier ordinance, that the incorporation by reference of this policy will be subject to the correction of the scrubber's error changing Brownsburg to Salem. We strike that out with ink writing in Salem, and we can initial that and move forward if you so choose to adopt that ordinance this evening. If you have any additional questions, may I let me know?
Justice, please. Ms. Sargent. Okay. Is this backflow prevention something we already do or not?
Correct. Yes, we already had several examples within industrial users. We added language in 2019 to make that requirement a little stiffer. So yes, this is a housekeeping item, just to amend the 2019-10 ordinance to give some more provisions and proceeds.
Are more people going to be coming under this that aren't already?
No, they certainly, if we have an industrial user that's not, then there is an issue of violation. But no, these are for industrial users.
Yeah. And that's.
Household use, like in our homes, all day.
It's big companies and things. You don't want to keep their water from being connected, right? But we just need better?
We just didn't have enough procedures showing how those applications and penalties of fines could be levied or how they could be addressed.
Okay.
So this is a better way of spelling out to amend this 2019-10.
Okay.
Board of Works did approve. So to Jacob's point, if you're agreeable with that scrubber's error, you can go ahead and approve.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2023-2 with the correction of putting in Salem to Brownsburg.
Second.
Dan makes the motion to approve 2023-2. Dylan seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay. Council, ordinance 2023-3 is a transfer ordinance on page 45. Sally, would you like to speak to that?
Again, this is a housekeeping item from 2022, and it's no new money. It's just moving from one line to another.
Transfer ordinance 2023-3.
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance 2023-3.
I second it.
Steve makes the motion. Paul seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. You would please your register of claims, page 46 through 68.
I make a motion to accept the claims.
Gail makes the motion to approve claims as presented.
I'll second that move.
Dan seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Okay, miscellaneous business. Council, you have four board of appointments tonight will address plan commission. Council, Danny currently sits as your plan commission representative. Danny, you're still good to stay on?
I have a little help.
We'll take these more into time, certainly. At your leisure and pleasure. Council, any thoughts on a motion?
I think Danny should, we should make a motion, keep Danny on there.
I'm going to steal your thunder. Gail makes the motion.
Yes.
Steve seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Solid Waste Management District, Gail is your current council appointment. Gail, would you like to retain and stay on?
That would be fine.
I'll make the motion to.
Should be settled with.
I'll make the motion to appoint Gail to Solid Waste.
I second that.
Dylan makes the motion. Paul seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Washington County Economic Growth Partnership. Gail, it's about the pleasure of that as well. Gail, are you satisfied and would you like to stay?
Yes, learned a lot there.
I think instead of making the motion to reappoint the Washington County Economic Growth, second.
Dan makes the motion to retain Gail. Dylan seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Your last one tonight, your senior citizens' equipment sadly, we don't know, and it's bringing in, we lost Rick Stewart, and so Rick had been your council appointment. That board only meets quarterly. They do not have a scheduled meeting yet. That one, if you would like to take better advisement, certainly you can make that later. You can put that back on the February agenda. What are discussions you'd like to have tonight?
Sounds good.
I can hear senior citizens. Well, I might be interested in doing that just tonight.
We want to pick that up next month and discuss it.
Okay. You might be interested in doing that.
Okay.
Right, I have a lot.
That's entirely up to you all. Like further discussion, you want to table, you want to vote?
I'll go ahead. I don't like to vote table because it makes the president.
Dan makes the motion to table senior system deployment to the February agenda for a second.
Second.
I think Steve first. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side. Okay, council, we've got a federal holiday that interferes with October 9th as your second meeting of the month. October 10th, that would be the follow-up day. If that's your will, please be able to make a motion to amend the calendar for council.
I'll make a motion to amend the calendar, the October 9th meeting to October 10th.
I second.
Dylan makes the motion. Paul seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same side. One item of miscellaneous business, we didn't get tight. That's our fault and time. Mr. Bauer, please. I think Ryan may have a pattern of interest that we would like to hear, so please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Treacher, council. My name is Ryan Bauer, and I am with the Public Defenders Office, and I have come to respectfully ask that you appropriate some of the restricted opioid funds that you guys have just received for the use of the visit of the parents that are involved with the Department of Child Services. This falls within the restricted funds purpose, and what we would do is what I'm going to call like more handoffs or wraparound services. So that would be services that fall through the cracks, through DCS or through our current representation at the Public Defender's Office, that they need. That'd be treatment programs. That would be housing help. That would be providing maybe a private attorney at a lesser cost to do some sort of cleanup of their former addiction so they can find good housing in the future. For the parents that aren't doing well and need like a family person to come take care of the children, we would have an attorney and try to find somebody outside the office that maybe could do a guardianship temporarily, things like that. So those are the things that we want to do with the funds. What we're asking for is $4,500. It's about 12.6% of what you get, 12.6% of what you're getting just this year. Each year, you'll get funding from the opioid litigation, and we're going to ask, and I asked last meeting, they tabled it, the Washington County Council till February, I think waiting to see what happens here, we ask for a match. So in your motion, if that's what you want to do, say, you know, any voter, any approval of the $4,500 from the city would also be contingent upon a match from the county. I think that'd be fine, unless we go to the county and say, boy, we sure could do that if everybody pitches in. It's a lesser percentage because the county's getting a little more money.
Is this the unrestricted funds? Is that what you're?
This would be the restricted. The unrestricted fund is a little different. I don't remember how much you guys are getting of that this year.
Seventeen thousand.
There you go, 17,000. So this is just restricted funds. So if you go to the Indiana Attorney General's site, it'll tell you what sort of things that you can use it for. It's only sort of specific things, and this is one of those things. This is under their Schedule B, Section B uses, and it's the sort of help for people that are involved in DCS, people that have had opioid and other addiction issues in the past. And these parents will already be the parents that are taking drug screens, they're doing good. They would be likely toward the end, with the exception of the ones early on that would maybe need guardianship or something like that. Most of them have already been doing pretty well and just need that little help up, you know, whether it's buying a crib or something like that, because that'll sometimes, for somebody of limited means, you know, saving money for a crib will take, you know, 60 days or 45 days, and that keeps them from getting into the house with their children and things like that. Getting a security deposit saved up will keep them, you know, a couple of months from doing it. So hopefully, this will get parents that deserve it back to their kids faster. So in the future, their law enforcement purposes, that chief may ask to use the restricted fund. My hope is, you know, I'll get to work with law enforcement for some other things, but right now, this is just for, these aren't for people necessarily charged with crimes or anything like that. This is in the civil section, the side that we do. or anything like that. This is in the civil section, the side that we do through DCS. So that's my request.
Mr. Bauer, just to underline, this request would then not ever be cash to these recipients. This will be purchases.
That's right. It would be, we would do the direct purchase. We wouldn't ever give, you know, $500 to somebody. We would work directly with the landlord or directly with whatever store, you know, Walmart or something like that, to buy them their children's mattresses, to buy them, you know, children's bed fring, things like that. Now, this would be cash payments or anything like that. And of course, we'll keep receipts, keep records, come back and report to you guys at the end of the year how well we've done, and hopefully it's good, because you're going to get some of those payments till 2038, so we certainly hope it's a good program and works very well. Any other questions?
No, I think we should make a motion to give you those funds.
I second that.
I think it sounds like a good thing.
I'll go, and I think it will be, I'm going to decide.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
Could we not have, maybe have fundraisers or something like that, Ryan, like the Washington County Economic Partnership out in with us and have fundraisers, you know, raise money for this too? I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, thank you. There are other non-profit organizations within the county that will be going through. There are some smaller subdivisions that do receive funds, so it could be that we would ask them for some funds, you know, of a few hundred dollars here or there. But, yeah, no, we hope that it'll be sustainable. We hope that we can
Help to get managing funds from the county.
Yeah, we definitely.
The same amount.
Kind of possible. Thanks, good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Gail, I think you teased it. Is that your motion?
Yes.
To support the request to spend $4,500 on annual payment out of the restricted funds of opioid settlement. Dylan, is that your second?
It was.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Thank you. That's all I need. I'll drive me to your door no more, thank you.
I'll be back anytime. Justin, I'd like to ask, have you discussed with Eric and all, anything about those restricted, it's a restricted funds, isn't it?
That's true.
Which ones go that's for opioids?
Restricted, yes. Russell, what you just did with Attorney General's language, we have to supplement some of those programs.
Yes, I know.
So with Ryan's help, yes, Eric will have some, and Ben will have some. I believe within the PD that might fund unrestricted purposes, so I think, yes.
Because I know that can help them too.
Between Chief Mills, even Officer Moore, I think we've got some ideas that might be on the board.
Okay, we have one comment. Mrs. Mr. Brown, please, you have four employees.
My name is Tom Brown. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, at a recent county planning commission meeting, I don't know whether it was a misunderstanding on my part or whether it was a misinterpretation of language. According to the county planning commission and attorney, they are claiming authority over the Two Mile Fringe, simply because they have flood plain and they do some paving. My question to the council and to the attorneys is, when or has the city relinquished control of the Two Mile Fringe? Because I know for a fact, the city has flood control in place, and the Two Mile Fringe, as far as I knew, was under city government rule. I need clarification. So, you know, I don't make a, you know, I don't want to misinterpret something that was expressed, but according to the county planning commission, they're saying they have control.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And I have, for you, Mr. Mayor, if you want to read that.
All in please.
You can read that paragraph right there, and you'll see where the miscommunication's coming in.
Well, I'll have to review that. No, city has not relinquished and does have jurisdiction of the Two Mile Fringe for planning and zoning, and so that is still in effect. I think Jacob can speak to that.
Yes, so statutorily, the city can exercise planning and zoning regulation in that Two Mile Fringe area. The maintenance of the roads, I mean, that would still be, you know, it would still be county roads. That wouldn't necessarily bring the roads and streets within, you know, like, the maintenance requirements of the city. But, you know, but that is a little bit disconnected from the actual planning and zoning decisions.
And like I said, you know, it could have been just a simple mis-slip, but, you know, when I heard it, I was like, wait a minute, that don't sound right. So I wanted to come before you guys, I wanted to ask, you have that for reference. So if you guys can check that out, Justin, you can call me and let me know, okay? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Sally, what have we missed?
That's it. I want to get one second.
I'll make a motion to do it here. Dylan makes the motion to do it there in 7:06.
This one, okay.